Our Team 41 on Springmore's in-house TV channel. Glad to have you join us again today. We've got a lot of announcements to go over, but some aren't a little different. Won't try to be as repetitive as I am sometimes about certain things. We'll do have some updates, but I want to go over some stuff that hopefully you'll find interesting and maybe a little bit different than what we go over. I wanted to start off by saying that starting in August, we're going to start doing these twice a month instead of every week. I think that these are good. I want to keep doing them, but it does take a lot of time and effort, which is not the problem. But as we kind of continue to get back into things and working on the budget and kitchen renovations and health center renovation projects and getting things ready for the new year, that's, we need to kind of get back on track with some of that stuff. Why not, of course, not forgetting and concentrating on COVID-19, which is most important. But I feel like having the town hall meetings twice a month and we can supplement information via memos, emails, or other ways of communication in the off weeks. I think that will be good. So, so starting in August, we'll do August 12th and August 26th will be the two times we'll do the town hall. Leah's going to put that out. We'll publicize it, but I think that's when we're going to start in August. We're not going to have town hall next week. So, no town hall next week, but we will do it last Wednesday in June, which I think is the 29th. Then we'll skip the 5th of August and then start the 12th and again skip whatever that Wednesday is and do the 26th. So, no town hall next week and start back on the 29th and then after that every other week. Alright, so news on how we're going to do that moving forward. And again, you're not going to miss out on anything. We'll still make sure if there's any information you need that we will get it to you. Also, I wanted to talk about the charts that we've been putting up on the portal and on the bulletin board. I realize that they have not been matching up, that we, Margot does numerous charts for us. Some are internal, some are for everybody, some are for reporting, some are for staffing. It's just, it's just a mixture of charts and I probably get four or five a day and they all mean different things to different people, but I keep up with them also. We tried to figure out the best way to just get y'all the information we felt y'all needed, which was the active cases and the, we had, one time we had total number of tests given and we said, ah, it just kind of gets outdated. They kind of increase and increase. That's not that valuable. But a lot of people wanted to see how many people have recovered. So, that became something that was, that people wanted to see and we have all that information. So, so we decided to add two columns, one for the residents, one for the staff, for total number of residents and staff that has recovered. So, you should now see that on the portal and you should see it on the bulletin board. In the portal, it's updated every day when, when there's a new update. And then the bullet, the one on the bulletin board is, that is posted whenever, whenever she sends it out for the day. So, there may be times where the portal is maybe a little more updated than the bulletin board, but that's just, we're not going to change the bulletin board three and four times a day. So, just be mindful of that. That's posted every day with the hospital list. But we do have those two new columns. So, I want to make sure we were giving y'all what y'all wanted with that. And some good news this week, our total number of cases, well, let me see, I don't want to get to that yet. Yeah, we'll go with that. Our total number of cases currently right now is down 50% from where they were this time last week. Currently, we have nine total active cases, seven residents and two staff members. So, golly, we've always had more staff than we have residents and to have just two staff members right now that are positive, what a huge improvement. I mean, what absolutely huge improvement. We had 10 at this time last week. So, we dropped eight staff members in a week. So, a total of nine cases now, seven residents, two staff. Last week we had 18, 10 staff members and eight residents. So, less cases for residents and less cases for staff. So, our numbers are trending favorably. Hope to continue the downward trend. Soon as we get like a bunch come off, we'll have one or two pop back on. And I've talked about that in the past about that's probably going to be reality for a while of every once in a while, a couple of new cases pop up. But my goal is to obviously always have zero, but realistically, if I can get all the old cases taken care of and get down to zero and then have one or two pop up here and there, I think that's going to be probably the best we can do moving forward until there is a vaccine or till everybody catches it maybe. I read an article the other day that they said this won't completely go away until 90% of the people have either A, been vaccinated, or B, been exposed to it. So, I don't know how accurate that is, but, but we'll see. But I was really good, really glad to see how that's trending down. The numbers for today for North Carolina, I don't think they're record highs, but they have increased day over day. Current number, current number of hospitalizations, 1,142. That's 33 more than yesterday in the hospital. And total deaths in North Carolina, 1,568. That's 16 more than yesterday. So, the numbers continue to rise, but I don't know if that, apparently today went like a record high of hospitalizations or record high, well, I guess it's be a record high of deaths because they continue to increase. But as far as day over day, I assume that wasn't a record. But anyway, so maybe with the trending is kind of in correlation, again, with what the state's doing, declining hospitalizations with our, some of our declining numbers. So, thought I'd just update y'all on that. So, I want everybody to know and hopefully I can tell from that chart how we're trending and you can see that again, it's 50% less week over week. And that's what the families will see and the, and people that's get the, the weekly recap of the memo, but y'all can track it every day to see where we're at. Another thing I want to talk about that several residents have asked and been pretty specific and adamant about wanting to know, and that was people that die from COVID-19. And I can understand the wanting to know that. I don't know if it's curiosity or fear or just, just wanting to know, but I, I understand people want to know those type of things. So, as I mentioned last week, somebody called in and asked if a resident that passed away of COVID-19 was the cause of death. And I said, I did not know, and I still do not know if that is the cause. Again, we or I do not look at death reports or death certificates of what someone actually dies of. So, I want to make that clear that I do not look at death reports to see what people die of. Also, we never report why people die. I've never reported in any type of format that, I don't know, Mrs. Jones or 50 million Mrs. Jones in the world. So, but yeah, I'm not talking about your wife. So, that Mrs. Jones, first one that comes to my mind. If Mrs. Jones dies of cancer, we, we don't, we don't relay that. So, that, that's no different than someone passing away of COVID-19. And that is not to be, not be transparent because I'm as transparent as possible about it. So, to give you all the information that I can give you without being, while staying HIPAA compliant, is as protected health information, as I think most everybody knows. I will say that we have had four people pass away that have had COVID-19. Okay? So, four people have passed away that have had COVID-19 and part of our reporting responsibilities each day that Margot has to report is how many cases we have staff, how many cases we have residents, and if anybody passed away that had COVID-19. Now, if they died of a heart attack, but they had COVID-19, she still has to report that because they, they tested positive for it. So, I hope that will help y'all with that. I don't know how more clear I can be without breaking the law of HIPAA and, and disclosing that information. Again, four deaths so far from people that had COVID. And yes, we do have to report anybody that passes that had contracted COVID-19. So, I think that's about it. I just want everybody to be clear on that because I know people are asking, they want to know. So, again, hopefully that helps. Going back to something that we've done and will continue to do and have another huge round of is, is testing. You know, when we did our first mass testing probably over a month ago, that's how we first found out we had multiple cases. And that was, that's the only way to find out you do have cases. Well, either somebody reports they have symptoms or you do a bunch of tests and you get a bunch of results back and a handful come back positive, which we knew was going to happen when we did almost 300 tests. So, we established a good baseline. That's where a lot of this original stuff came from. We contact traits, we tested more people, and that's how we've been able to get our numbers down, find out who's sick, we address it, and we get them better. So, the state of North Carolina, which I had talked about a couple of weeks ago, and I didn't know if we qualified or not because A, we're private pay and B, we've already done mass testing. If we were going to qualify for the statewide tests that all nursing homes are going to be offered to do in the near future. So, we have been contacted by the state of North Carolina about doing mass testing only for skilled nursing. Let me be very clear. They, they're only looking at testing residents and staff in skilled nursing, which is the Stuart Health Center. So, not all the independent residents, not all the independent employees, not 1,100 of us, just the, just the 115 or so skilled nursing residents we'll have in the health center at the time and the 200 and some odd staff that we have there that work on a regular basis in the health center. They're all, they're going to come in one day from six in the morning to third shift at night and test as many people as they can. Obviously, we'll be able to get all the residents. Hopefully, we'll get as many staff as possible, but we're not, they're not going to drag it out and, you know, going to come back the next day for first shift and the next night at 11 o'clock for third shift. They're not going to leave testing kits. So, we're making a bigger pushes we can to get as many staff members tested as possible that work in the health center. That will provide us another new baseline. That will probably provide us more positive tests. The more you test, the more you're going to get because a lot of people walk around asymptomatic. About 50% of the people that we have had tested employee-wise have been asymptomatic, never had symptoms, never knew they had symptoms, but tested positive. So, it is a good thing to know who they are so we can address them, get them quarantined, get them better, and get them back to work. So, on August 5th, we'll conduct another mass testing, which is going to be conducted and paid for by the state. That will not be paid for by Springmore. It's going to be conducted by CVS Pharmacy, which is owned or owns another company called Omnicare, which is a very large long-term care pharmacy provider. They're nationwide and they're the ones that's going to be conducting the tests for all skilled nursing facilities throughout the state of North Carolina. Did read a lot. I saw all these things pop up on my phone as the big brother watching over you and seeing what you like. So, the things pop up, the things you have interest in. Did see on the internet last night that there's a nursing home in Montana that declined the free testing that the state was giving. And I think 80% of the residents had actually contracted the virus and eight residents had died. So, obviously, that facility's getting sued big time. So, so we, of course, would never not turn down free testing, A. B, it's, it's great to establish another baseline. And C, we owe it to our residents and staff to know where we're at again. So, we'll do that on August 5th. Let's see. We'll also be requiring all new employees to be tested for COVID-19 before they begin work. So, that's a new policy that we put in place that all new employees will have to provide. We're actually going to do the, do the test for them as part, as part of the pre-hiring procedure. We do, you know, background check. We do TB tests. We do drug screening tests. So, now we're going to do a COVID-19 test for all new, new employees. So, that's going to start. And lastly, we're getting some pretty cool news. We found out that we are going to be receiving, and I have no idea when, a, I don't know the exact name, but it's a COVID-19 testing machine. So, apparently, the, the nation is, or, I don't know, I was going to say, the federal government is issuing these testing machines to all nursing homes throughout the nation. I believe there's 15,000, some odd thousand nursing homes throughout the nation. I thought there would be more than that, but maybe it's just 15,000. I may have read that wrong. But they're going to issue these machines that we can test residents and staff on site. They're not going to provide the testing kits. We'll still have to get those from Mako Laboratories or whoever we decide to use. Mako's been pretty good, but we'll be able to take the test kit and test the resident or employee, use our machine to test it, and then provide pretty quick, pretty quick results. So, that will provide, that will allow us to test more people more frequently. When we're going to get those machines and if we do, is yet to be determined. This was just announced today. So, I don't have any more information than that's, it's been approved, but it's kind of like your checks in the mail. We'll see when it comes. So, that would be very good if we do have that though. So, I'm excited about that. Let's see. All that on testing. We're very lucky, and I'll talk about this more in a minute, to have an expert control nurse who's really an expert in kind of what she's, in actually what we're doing here. And having her has been huge and the number one thing of, I think, you know, maintaining the virus, containing the virus in a community like this. But Margot McNally, who's our infection control nurse, she's created this document. You know, it's originally intended for employees of six facts about, about the coronavirus. They pertain to wearing your mask, you know, symptoms, exposure to the virus, and, and other issues. So, she created this really cool thing with six facts, and I thought it was so informative. I asked her if I could share it with all of y'all. The more people know, the better. So, we have taken that form and we've altered it a little bit of the kind of verbiage we addressed to the employees and just put the basic six facts on there for the residents to see. This will help y'all with, with family and friends and gatherings and just your day-to-day life and miss you may hear or, or best practices you can follow. So, that's going to be posted on the portal tomorrow when we post the, the memo recap. And that's going to be under the important links section within the portal. So, please be looking for that. It's just going to be called like six important facts or something, Holly?
I'm okay.
Okay, cool. So, Holly's going to put it in the memo as well. And I'm not sure exactly what it's titled, but it's, it's like six facts or six important facts. So, you'll see that. So, she'll have it in the memos. You'll probably, you may see that before us on the portal, but not sure if you get your mail first or check the portal first or your email. So, be looking for that. Another thing I wanted to talk about that we hadn't talked about in a long time, and I'm surprised people hadn't asked, which I hope they feel confident about, is marketing. I thought I should, I would talk about marketing during this time and let people know where we're at and what we're doing. Marketing continues to still be very strong. Obviously, it's not what it was before all this started. We're not having as many inquiries. We're not having as many leads come in. And obviously, we're not doing as many tours as we have. That's expected. That's nationwide, obviously. But the good news is about marketing is we're still on track to move in the same amount of people as we did last year. So, even with COVID-19 and everything that's happened in 2020, we're still on track and we're halfway through the year to move in the same amount of people. And the other good news is when units do come open and come, become available, that we are selling them off our waitlist just as we were before. Now, they're taking a little longer to move in. There's a few more kinks, but they are being taken and being spoken for. So, they are being reserved. So, our numbers in that aspect has not dropped as far as units available to sell and, and actually units getting revenue. That's just, it's just slowed down a little bit. So, that's good news. I thought y'all would want to know that. That continues to be strong. Home care, I wanted to just put a plug out there. If anyone needs home care, please contact Joyce Isley. We're in the process of hiring more staff for home care. Home care's kind of been up and down recently. It was at all time high and it's dropped down this year. A couple of things, I think some of the four main reasons are where the people moving into Springmore now are much younger, which is a great thing. They're not needing home care until much later and they're, and to their experience here at Springmore in independent living with having COVID-19 residents and families just been hesitant about having extra people come in their rooms. So, we've seen a drop in just actual utilization due to fear of just, you know, more employees being around mom or dad. Again, makes sense. We've had a lot of deaths in the health center. Four that's been on the isolation unit, but we've had well over 20 deaths, I would say in the six months, well over 20 deaths in the health center. And a lot of those people that passed, do you know about how many we've had? Well, well over 20 deaths in the, in the five, over the five months we've been doing this. And a lot of them did have home care workers, which Al obviously are not needed. And then lastly, you know, when somebody, when somebody moves to the health center, which we've had people move to the health center, you know, that's a huge expense. It's, it's no secret. There's much more to live in the health center. There's an independent living. You're getting more care. It's higher level of care. And then having home care on top of that is more of a luxury and an added expense. So, a lot of people have elected not to have their home care people come over, either again for that exposure to another staff member or that increased expense coming over. So, it just depends on, on people, how, you know, what they want, what they can afford and kind of what their, what they want their lifestyle to be. So, so, but we do have some openings. So, don't hesitate to call Joyce. We want to fill those. We want you to use Springmore Home Care. Yes, we enjoy y'all using it because it does produce revenue for us. It all sets to staff, which the more revenue we produce, the less we can pass along for rate increase, which is the main goal to meet our budget, but also helps us because we know they're our employees. They're, they're vetted. They're, they go through the COVID-19 pre-testing, the drug test, the background check, all that stuff. They're our employees and we can track them. So, call Joyce for that. I want to put in a plug for that. And then one more thing I wanted to mention before we get into a few little updates and some final thoughts. I had a couple of people reach out to me about staff members they see going in different areas or going in different entrances. Please be mindful that should. I'm not saying this is 100% accurate. I'd like to think it is. I feel sure it's 99.9% accurate. All employees are checking in with their home department or in a certain area before they actually come to work. Now, when you see a home care worker or someone from dining come into entrance four and go down the hall, they've already checked in with their home department in the kitchen to be screened. And the home care worker's already checked in at her department or the health center to be screened. Now, she may be walking around or drove around and got out and then goes into entrance four, but they're not just coming in without being checked. So, so please know that everybody's checked, even in administration. We come in every morning. If you've been in the business office lately, you'll see our conference room is kind of a workroom now. We come in, we check each other, we log it, and that's how we do it. So, everybody's being checked when they come in the morning. So, if you see them, if you see me come in entrance four, I've already been checked. So, same thing for dining and home care and people like that. So, just be mindful of that. Alright, so that's all the announcements I had. So, we'll get over here into some updates. I'm going to talk about some fitness classes and what we're doing. We got some things that's changing. I think it actually started today, but let me read this to make sure I'm accurate. The land fitness classes, I assume that's not in the pool. Oh, yep, Mrs. Prince, he's not pool. So, land fitness classes have temporarily, temporarily been canceled. Again, that is not the pool. That's just the, that's just the classes we do in the great room and in the movement room. In an effort to maintain a safe environment for all residents and staff, we felt it's necessary to increase social distancing during fitness classes. It's not safe for our residents to exercise while, while wearing masks. We have been distancing at the recommended six feet. In order to continue exercising in a group without masks, we are creating an eight by eight square for each participant. This will decrease the class size. So, we had a big debate and a big kind of figuring out how do we do the classes safely? We could do up to 10 people, but people wouldn't wear a mask, which was concerning people and concerning staff. So, we kind of compromised and said, okay, well, employees, residents can't wear the mask while they're exercising. That's not healthy. So, so we just decreased the class size by enlarging the actual area that they have to exercise in. So, it looks like the, the exercise classes, I think they went yesterday, Monday and Tuesday. I think from today to the rest of the week, they're canceled. And I believe they start back, I think that's probably what I'm going to have next to read, but I think they start back next Monday. So, in order to provide an effective and efficient schedule, the fitness staff needs your input. Survey was delivered last night. So, if you hadn't seen that, I assume it's in your mailbox. Make sure you check that. If you're interested in attending in-person fitness classes, please submit your answers by this Friday, July 17th. Return box is located in the North Village Great Room and South Village Portico. So, make sure you check that out and that will help Carrie and her group see what y'all want now, especially during this time, so we can give you as much as we can. The results will be used to create a new schedule and accommodate the majority. That's what I just said. Alright, we thank you for your patience. Look forward to exercising with you again soon. So, I know how Carrie thinks, so I just knew she was going to say that. That's why I didn't even look at the third bullet point. So, that's not true, but... Is this thing on? Okay. Alright, so we'll go to the North Village Exercise Room. Please remember the North Village Exercise Room is available for one resident at a time. A whiteboard is available on the wall outside the room for you to schedule an exercise session. Personal training. The fitness team is available for one-on-one personal training for a fee. It is not free, but for a fee. This service was introduced in 2018. You're welcome. I came up with that idea with the help of Carrie and grew tremendously in 2019. If you're interested in training, please contact Carrie Ritchie. Your first session is free. I think that was Carrie's idea. I suggested it be $100 for a session and she said, no, that was too high. That's not true either. But we have created that personal training. It is, it is really neat. It is a fee for service. It's not something everybody should have to pay for because it's a one-on-one service. So, if you're interested, call Carrie. We can add it to your monthly bill. We have a code for it. Philip helped create all that and Carrie's got that. We're going to ramp that up even more next year. Got some, some more hours for staff members to really increase that and to do more exercise classes. That's all in the year to come with some exciting stuff. But in the meantime, a lot of, that's all the, the fitness stuff I wanted to talk about. Vespers, that continues to be active with spiritual wellness. We'll continue to have small 10 or fewer people person gatherings. So, call the hotline at 7700 for your reservation. Discussion groups, Thursday, July 16th, 10:30 in North Village, 3:30 in South Village. Vespers this Sunday at 7:00 PM. Matt Thompson will be preaching. Where's he from? Retired Lutheran minister. Alright. Well, here at Good Shepherd or... Lori does not know where Matt Thompson retired from. Well, in Lori's credit, she's a Methodist minister, so she can't keep up with everybody. I don't know what the Baptist homes doing down there in South Carolina and who's managing that anymore. So, Lori shouldn't know who the Lutheran pastor is. I agree. Vital Conversations. We're thankful to have such a great response and we started a second group. That's cool. So, that's great. So, it's Wednesday, the two times, Wednesday at 7:15 at 3:00 PM and Tuesday, July... Oh, who called in for that one? Oh, I bet, oh yeah, maybe it was Phyllis. Good call. If that was you, Phyllis, or whoever else. Matt Thompson. Man, Lori is 0 for 3. So, she is swinging a miss. Alright, so anyway, we all fall short, Lori. So, Matt Thompson, thank you for calling in with that. But the discussion group is again, July 15th, 3:30 and the 21st at 3:30. This group has more spaces available. So, the second time on the 21st, that's got, so if you want to be around less than 10 people, come to the one on the 21st. And in God's beloved community, we are all called to love our neighbor as ourselves. These discussions about racial differences are not easy to undertake. Still, God is calling us to be courageous, steadfast, and true to our calling to transform the world from one that is divided and broken to one where God's peaceful kingdom will come. Please join us for the nine-week course of exploration. I honestly cannot say that any better and all that is possible through God. The only way I think we'll get through all that. So, that's my thoughts on that. And I have a final thought before we take questions. We'll do the calls at 7054 after this. But I was thinking about the way that people, you know, perceive retirement communities now and, and how, how we'll deal with this in the future and how it's affected us. That's why I thought I'd talk about marketing to kind of reassure y'all that it is still strong and people still want to be here. And people that have passed away in the health center, I cannot tell you the support and the notes and the nice emails I've got from family members of anyone that was on the, the isolation wing for COVID-19 or someone that, that's passed away in the health center that was not. So, it's still such a vital, you know, business we're in to care for people. It's never going to be replaced by robots. It's never going to be replaced by anything but caring, loving individuals such as the staff we have here. And thankfully, we have y'all to care for, which is a perfect circle, which helps us care for our families. You've heard me say that a thousand times. But I was reading an article and it, and it, and it really hit home because I heard this early on. It was not, you know, if you get the virus in your community, but when you get it. So, most operators or administrators like myself, we're not worried about keeping the virus out anymore. We're, we're all past that. It's, it's, it's how do we live with it moving forward? So, I, I thought that was very interesting. And that may seem nonchalant or eh, not worried about getting it, but it's reality. And when all these communities start doing free testing in North Carolina, Springmore, the other hundred or so more on the, on the list are, aren't going to be the only ones. So, we've got to learn that we can't keep it out and we were lucky. And we were lucky to go 103 days and keep it out. But how do we live with it? Uh, three most important things that I read and I believe because I want to talk about is, is first is having, is having or hiring an infection control specialist. So I've said this so many times, but having Margo here during this time has been a godsend. She has been so, I give her so much credit because all of this is new to us. And I know it's new to her, but this was her area of specialty. And she came in and poor thing has, this is all she knows. And I jokingly said, when this is all over, you're going to be so bored at your job that it's just going to be, you know, you're just going to be just, you're going to be tickled pink because her main job is obviously infection control, which is never a pandemic, but it's also staff education. It's also helping with, with any kind of, you know, orientation with, 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 uh, staff members and best practices. But that's a, that's like a teaching thing and she's also, or she's taught before. So she's been a natural at it, but having the experience in, in actual infection control has been huge. And if we wouldn't have had her, there's no doubt we would have had to hire somebody or try to hire somebody. So that's number one. Having a infection, infection control specialist. Number two is access to plenty of PPE. Again, that's personal protective equipment. That's the mask, that's the gowns, that's the eye shields, that's the shoe coverings. That's everything we have to have when we go into a room where someone's isolated. We treat it a little bit different whenever they're isolated for precaution and then when they actually have COVID. The PPE is, is, it's not cheap. And it's more available than it was before, but it's still not just go out and get as much as you want. We have been very blessed to have a lot of vendors that's been able to provide us PPE. We had a lot on hand. First of all, um, Sherry White, who did this for years, she was adamant about stockpiling stuff to where I thought somewhat obsessive at first, but thank God she did it now. And she passed right when all this was happening, that we already had a good supply of a lot of these things. So once we found out we needed more, we were able to contact so many vendors, Sedexo, who's our food service provider to have access to so many different products. They were able to get us the majority of gowns and masks, N95s, eyewear, shoe coveries, all that stuff. They've been our main provider. So thank you to them. McKesson and Neil Medical, those are medical supply companies. They've been rationing people for supplies. Some they give them more to others that they got a case, uh, but we've had them that we've worked with. We've had, um, Leading Age North Carolina has found different vendors that have, um, you know, like certain factories or distilleries or, or plants that have ceased operations of what they mainly do and started making masks or started making sanitizer. So we've been able to, a lot of doors opened through Leading Age North Carolina for all that PPE. So that's number two. And third, which is hard to do and fall right in this boat again every day, is reducing stress and anxiety for staff. For staff members, the way they feel when a coworker tests positive, a resident they care for tests positive, or just all the changes that they have to make sometimes daily due to regulation and rule changes. We've had so many changes in rules and regulations. You've seen it in your life here at Springmore with exercise classes and gatherings and dining and no visitors and you just name it. It's just been one thing after another. And there was a time where literally we were changing every day. And, uh, that's hard on the staff too. And I don't, no need for y'all to worry about the staff. Y'all, you know, our jobs will worry about you. But, uh, that is stressful and it's very anxious for staff members to think about that. I constantly think about it of how to keep my staff and my employees comfortable with coming to work every day, you know, reminding them they have jobs, remind them this, this is what they had to do. Reminding them they've been called to do this and got to rise to the occasion, reminding them that, you know, hospitals are now furloughing nurses and CNAs again because the cases have increased. So there's no elective procedures. So having a job has been huge, provided us a job here every day through this five-month period. And I know that we'll continue to provide people jobs after that. So again, the stress and anxiety is huge and we try to reduce that as much as possible. So. For my residents, Dr. Young, who obviously doctor, um, like Dr. Young is, you know, wouldn't remind me and others about trying to stay positive and all the things that we have here at Springmore that, that we're lucky for. I, I know that and I try not to put it in everybody's face every day. Um, obviously I believe it, but I, I, I think that he is absolutely right, that we're just so blessed to have so many good things here. And we got to stay positive and accentuate the positive. I think there's a couple of people that sung that and he put that in my box. So just remembering that, that, um, things are looking better for us. Absolutely. You can see through the numbers. We're going to do more testing to see where we're at with the baseline to address more people. And, uh, we're getting a lot of cool things like the, the mass testing and with the testing machine and, um, all those things that are helping. So slowly but surely we'll get through this and back to normal. So thank you. Um, I'm sure we probably have some questions, so I will be happy to answer whatever came through or going to come through. Oh my gosh. I did not go over Leah's stuff. Shoot, did it get stuck? Oh, hold on. Man, it got stuck to my. Oh man, let's see. My gosh, I do not, I don't know why I do not have it. Oh, hold on, it may be stuck here. Uh, I do. Sorry. It was stuck to this. I'm so sorry. So I have the, I have my notes I write out on paper. And then when we get to the wellness stuff, they always send me and Holly a copy of what they're going to discuss and you can tell I pretty much read that. And then Holly has it ahead of time to prep it for the recap memo, which, which saves some time and effort on that. So I'm so sorry, whoever called. It may have been Leah. Thank you. Herf was stuck here. So let me go over this real quick and we'll go take some calls. We're going to be doing ice cream delivery again tomorrow. Again, ice cream delivery starting at 12:30. If you do not want ice cream, I don't know why you wouldn't, please leave a note on the door and no ice cream will be available to you. Me and Randy will eat the leftovers. But tomorrow, 12:30, we look forward to seeing everybody. We had an awesome time last time seeing everybody and delivering that. So we're going to do that tomorrow. North Village Pool Breezeway can be reserved for social distant gatherings of 10 or less. That's very important. And, uh, you see Leah's being creative with how we can do that and do that stuff outside. The pool breezeway is a great place to gather. It's covered, so it's shaded. If it rains, you can still have something. So get with Leah and you can reserve the breezeway for 10 people or less for a gathering. And a reminder, as we get heated up here in the, um, political races and everything going on, uh, please be mindful, we do have a political action policy that's within our Stewart Health Center, with our Springmore handbook. And, um, and just a reminder that Springmore Inc. is a nonprofit corporation and as such cannot be involved in political action. We also respect the privacy of residents and we'll make every effort to see they are not exposed to political action. Springmore internal mail cannot be used for political action, nor can bulletin boards be used for this purpose. Springmore has no control over the US mail, so your boxes may contain political material. Again, that will not be internal, but through the US mail. Residents who wish to hold political meetings in their homes may do so. You may also reserve common areas of Springmore for your privately sponsored political program. However, you may not publicize these events through Springmore communication processes. This has been in place forever. This is not nothing new with everything going on in the world. It's concrete. It's one of the things that we believe in. It's one of the things that we have to do to, um, to protect everybody's rights and, um, that's how, that's our political action policy. So just please, please be mindful of that, that, um, we've got to respect the privacy and opinions of our residents. That's why we allow people to create inside of their house the way they want to. But we have to keep a certain type of formality in common rooms, hallways and things of that nature of no solicitation, especially political stuff. So that's part of our foundation, our, in our handbook there within residents. So thank you for that reminder. All right. Some questions. So Matt Thompson is from Ridge Road Baptist Church. I actually think I know where that is. Retired. So, so Matt, Matt Johnson, not Lutheran, but Baptist. So the question was, why are we still getting positive tests without mass testing? That's a good question. We, as I said earlier, screen all employees every day. So we have to answer four questions and if anybody's temperature is over 100.4, we have to tell our supervisor. That's one of the red flags that you need to go home and get tested. So we are one of two things. Employees are coming to us and saying they have symptoms. Those symptoms will be on the six facts that you'll see from Margo's sheet. So employees are still being, um, are still contracting the virus through however you get the virus. And they're displaying symptoms and the same thing for residents. Residents are displaying symptoms. So we keep a close eye on residents all the time, especially in the health center and supportive living. If you're independent living, you're independent and it's a good thing, but if you're having symptoms, you need to call the clinic and let, and, and then we need to assess you. But we assess everyone that's on isolation three times a day. We do, we do two wellness checks and we do, um, vital screenings once. So even everyone that was isolated and still is on supportive living, they're checked three times a day. So we can pick up on those symptoms. Same thing for the health center. We check them twice a day. So if someone is congested, if they're confused or running a fever, we see that and that, and we test them and that's how, that's how we're getting more positive results. Because we're able to identify the symptoms for residents and staff. So the question is, can we list the, um, on the chart, the number of deaths? No, we're not going to do that. Again, I do not know if someone died of COVID-19. I'm not going to put anybody's death total on any type of report. I see no value in that. I see no value in, in, in wanting to know that. Again, it is, I will tell you each week how many people we have, but we do not report or publicize deaths in any type of numerical statistical format in any way here. So now that will not be displayed. The question was, will there be any other testing before August 4th? I don't know the answer to that. Hopefully not. Um, hopefully not. We spent a lot of money, which is well spent on having private tests done on this first mass testing. We're going to get a free round come August 5th. Now, if it would have happened, knock on wood, to have some big outbreak in the health center, we may have to test again before August 5th, but no, the plan is to not have any more mass testing. We would have not planned to have another mass test, mass testing unless the state would have paid for it free. It costs a very large amount of money, which again was well needed and paid for and we had the money to do it, but it's not cheap. But now we're testing people based on symptoms, which is obviously proven successful and positive. We've been able to identify the people. Um, and that's how we're finding out how it is. So no, I don't anticipate any more mass testing before August 5th, but again, I can't say that for, for sure 100%. Okay. All right. So thank y'all for calling in. Thank you for all the questions. Those are really good. And I look forward to seeing y'all on the 29th, 29th. Won't be here next Tuesday, so y'all enjoy a week off. Maybe we can play some reruns or maybe, maybe Daniel can put some best of clips together. And, uh, maybe we can redo that. That probably won't happen, but, um, my apologies to Lori for giving her a hard time. She's such a good sport. Lori's got a daughter who'll be going to the University of Alabama next, uh, next year. That's really cool. Um, I told her that, um, she's, when's she going, Lori? The middle of August. That's a long way away. I tell those crazy people down there in Alabama. But they have a pretty cool football scene, which she won't get to experience probably this year. But will make for a very fun time in the next three seasons. So, um, anyway, so looking forward to that. And if school starts back, it's going to be a challenge for, uh, I guess your grandkids, if you have those, for our staff, we'll get through it. It's really kind of complicated and, uh, but again, just more stuff to think about and deal with, but, uh, can only make us stronger and smarter and better and somehow. So we'll figure that out when the time comes and y'all have a great week. Thanks.